Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's City Council meeting. The date is June 20th, 2016. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Mayor Ford.
Here.
Mayor Protem Bullock.
Here.
Councilman Amador.
Present.
Councilman Teeter.
Here.
Councilwoman Carson.
Present.
Councilman Diaz.
Here.
Councilman McElDowney.
Here.
Councilwoman Elliott.
Present.
Councilman Douglas.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, and for the record, everyone is here tonight on council. First thing we're going to start off with is I want you all to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, but before that, I want to do a moment of prayer, so you can still rise, and I want to make sure that everybody keeps in their prayers and their hearts the incident that happened in Orlando a week ago, and how tragic that was, and as a city, we always think and plan for the worst, and we wish something like that not on anyone. So if you please join me in a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. That's the first time that's happened in 13 years. Now I'd like to ask the staff to go around and introduce Betty and Danny Thomas.
Danny Thomas.
Betty Thomas.
And there is some staff in the back. I was just having some fun.
And staff.
Pass that microphone around.
Kathy Blakeman, Human Resources.
Tim Moore, Recreation.
Mike Brown, Parks and Recreation.
Lisa Nordholt, Recreation.
Karen O'Donnell, Parks, Recreation and Golf.
Paul Heebink, Buffalo Run Golf Course.
Carolyn Keith, Parks, Recreation and Golf.
Lowell Richardson, Police Department.
Jeff Woog, South Adams County Fire Department.
Matt Miller, Recreation.
Chad Redden, Recreation.
Derek Tripp, Recreation.
All right, thank you all for being here. First item on the agenda is Proclamations and Recognitions. We have the 2016 Day of Play Proclamation. I'd like to invite all of those Parks and Rec staff folks to come up to the podium and accept the proclamation. But I'd start now with the City Attorney, Robert Cheesley. Would you please read the proclamation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas play is a valuable part of a child's healthy development and is a crucial factor in the overall well-being of children, as well as people of all ages, and whereas Parks and Recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Commerce City, and whereas children who play do better in school and develop cognitive skills that are linked to learning and academic performance, and whereas our Parks and Recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for individuals with disabilities, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all residents, and whereas the City of Commerce City acknowledges children are one of our most important resources, therefore, we must ensure safe and accessible play spaces for all children, and whereas the city promotes children, as well as people of all ages, spend time outside at parks, trails, and playgrounds with family and friends, and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas the City of Commerce City will join Playful Cities USA in celebrating Play Day by hosting a free family fun zone at the annual Fourth Fest Celebration, July 4th, at Dick's Swarting Goods Park. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, on behalf of the City Council, hereby proclaim Monday, July 4, 2016, as a day of play in the City of Commerce City, and that July is recognized as Parks and Recreation Month in the City of Commerce City, and encourage all residents to share the benefits that come from Parks and Recreation.
All righty, thank you. Carolyn, we have some things we'd like to say, but I'd like to give you and your staff the opportunity first.
Honorable...
There you go.
One of these days, I'll get this right. Honorable Mayor, members of City Council, it's my pleasure, as well as staff present tonight, to accept the 2016 Day of Play and Parks and Recreation Month Proclamation. These are just a few folks from the Parks, Recreation and Golf Department that work diligently every day to provide the services and programs for Commerce City residents and guests to our community, and I not only want to thank you, but I want to thank them and our entire staff for the tireless work that they do, because I believe that our department, as all city departments, truly make a difference for the lives of the Commerce City residents. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. How many of the rest of you would like to get up and say something? More than welcome. I'd like to start off by saying, you know, we're really grateful that we have the staff that we do in all of our departments. We know, and I'm thankful for the council that I work with, that we're able to bring forward some projects, and I know they're overwhelming at times. New rec center, multiple new parks up north, the water park, I mean, there's so many things that affect the Parks and Rec Recreation Department, because I think this council's doing a great job of trying to provide more services to the residents. And I know that at times, you get frustrated, because there is a lot going on, and you're trying to juggle all these different things at one time. But the new parks that are being provided for our residents, the new water park, and can't wait to see the rehab of the rec center and the construction of the new rec center, are all going to be great additions to this community for our residents, and you all should be proud to be a part of that, because these are things that are going to last a long time in this community, and you guys are the ones that are helping to design and build these facilities that our residents will get to enjoy for many, many years. So every year, we're proud of our rec department, our Parks and Recreation Department. I don't want to forget, since Paul's here, the rehab of Buffalo Run. And I golfed, I golfed that course the other day, and it's in great shape. Really proud of the opportunity to fix and bring some light to some of these 20-year-old items, to make them renewed and better for our public. So this year especially, congratulations to the Parks and Rec Department, and thank you for everything that you do, and I know you're not all here, but please pass that on to those who aren't. All right, Councilman Bullock.
I just want to say thank you to all the staff here. I'm looking out there, and the only person I don't see is Zach and everything, but knowing if he was at the pool today, he's probably exhausted now, and he's sleeping in his car. But thank you to all of you for everything that you do, because you do go above and beyond the call of duty every day, and I see it personally in the morning, but thanks again to all of you.
Okay. Councilwoman Carson. You were there, and now it's gone.
I know, it disappeared. I thought you just shut me down. I also wanted to say thank you. I know you guys realize that you touch almost every citizen in this city, probably at least on a monthly basis, if not weekly, or a couple of times a week, what you do for our youth, our seniors, everybody else in between. It's what makes the city a wonderful place to live, so thank you. I know I hear great things from the kids all the time and the seniors, and Buffalo Run is, seems to be wonderful, so thank you, but thanks to everybody.
Mr. Teeter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, thank you again, Parks and Recs. And I have a lot of connections in the city, especially the beauty shop, number one rumor mill in Commerce City, and the people that come in there, they talk about what the good work you're doing every day, and throughout the city, I run into people all the time, and they just rave about the new parks and the new swimming pool and everything else. This weekend, the Class of 66 is having our 50th class reunion, and I'm bringing in, or they're coming in, 100 people are going to come into Commerce City this weekend for our class, and they're going to go around, and we're going to show them all these great spots that we have done for this city while they're in town, so these out-of-staters will really enjoy this this weekend. Thank you.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes, shout out to all you guys. Appreciate all your hard work. Just like colleagues had said, you guys do ingring with all our citizens throughout your busy week, and then with the new opening of the new rec center here in a couple of years, I mean, that's, we're going from the south to the north, and just adding a great amenities in our city, and everybody talks about the water park. They're trying to figure out what's the best time to come down there, because they know in the morning it's packed, so I appreciate everybody's hard effort, and you know, we have long days as well, but you guys here, you know, you have your regular workdays, and you had to stay over for extra things, and I appreciate Parks and Rec's meetings and Paul for, you know, for a great celebration up there at the golf course, so I just want to shout out and tell you everybody, thank you, appreciate your hard work.
All right, Mr. Amador.
Thank you. I just hear a lot of things that are going on, and you know, I could talk the ears off a wooden Indian, talking about all the good things that are going on in the Parks and Recreation Department, the programs, the golf course, and that dialogue goes two ways. So I hear many, many positive things from our parks to our new recreation center. You know, I get it, our senior community wants things to stay the same, and our younger generation want new programs and things to change, and so striking that balance is always a balance for you guys, so challenge accepted and good job.
Councilman Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor. A big shout out and a big hug of appreciation, if you will. In the circle of friends that I have, it's funny how I mentioned something about Buffalo Run. Oh, that's one of the best golf courses I've played in in a long time. Paradise Island, I have some friends that are actually booking some parties there because of the visit that they had last year. They loved it. They said this is better than Waterworld. My son is now, in fact, he's playing right now as we speak over at the fields at Pioneer Park. We've had a lot of family going to his games over the last few years, or excuse me, few weeks, and by far, those are the best fields that my son has ever played on, and he's played since he was three. Just the compliments from people in the community of all the things that are going on and up-and-coming programs with our youth. Lisa, we've worked on a few things with Adams City Middle School. I've gotten a lot of positive feedback. So there's just so many things that I hear on a regular basis, and thank you is just not enough. But again, my sincerest appreciation and continue that good hard work that you're continuing to do.
All right, again, I know everybody's truly appreciative of the jobs you do. We all want to come down and join you for a picture. So the council will please come down front.
Mr. Mayor, I neglected to remember to remind you to vote on the proclamation as well.
Now...
So you have my sincerest apologies.
That's all right. I'm open for a motion. Mr. Bullock. Mr. McElDowney. Motion of second to approve that proclamation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Robert, keep me on track. All right. We hadn't got to that point yet, that's why. Citizen Communication. We did have the list. I didn't have anybody sign up, but I'm going to ask, because I know we have Mr. Woog and some residents in the audience, is there anybody that didn't get a chance to sign up that would like to come before the council? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Next item is approval of the minutes. We have the April 4th, 2016 minutes. I need a motion to allow Councilmember Carson to abstain for voting on the minutes because of her excused absence. Mr. McElDowney. All right, Mr. Douglas.
Second.
You have a motion of second to allow for that abstention. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now I need a motion to approve the minutes of April 4th. Mr. Teeter.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of April 4th.
Thank you. Mr. Diaz.
Second the motion.
Have a motion of second to approve the minutes of April 4th. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We'll move on to the May 2nd, 2016 minutes. I need a motion to allow Councilmembers Amador and McElDowney to abstain from voting on the minutes because of their excused absence. Mr. Douglas.
So moved.
Mr. Bullock.
Second.
Have a motion of second to allow that abstention. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now I'm open for a motion to approve the minutes of May 2nd. Mr. Bullock.
Move to approve the minutes of May 2nd, 2016.
Mr. Teeter.
Second.
Have a motion of second to allow, to approve the minutes of May 2nd. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, next item, minutes of May 16th, 2016. I need a motion to allow myself and Councilmember McElDowney to abstain from voting on the minutes because of our excused absences. Mr. Bullock.
So moved.
Mr. Douglas.
Second.
I have that, motion of second on that abstention. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now I'm open for a motion to approve the minutes of May 16th. Mr. Douglas.
Move to approve minutes for May 16th, 2016.
Mr. Teeter.
Second.
Have a motion of second to approve the minutes of May 16th. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. That takes us into the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes items that are routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, and non-controversial. They are presented to council for a single motion and vote. Any member of council may ask to remove a specific item for further discussion in a separate vote. Tonight, there are five items listed under the consent agenda. Does anyone on the council wish to remove an item off of the consent for further discussion? If so, raise your hand, because I've got names already popping up. All right. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, but first, I'm going to allow the City Attorney to read the items on the consent agenda.
Resolution 2016-71, resolution approving award of contract for quality assurance testing services for Tower Road widening project. Resolution 2016-76, resolution authorizing third amendment to the contract for capital program and project management services. Resolution 2016-77, resolution approving amendment to master services agreement for engineering services. Resolution 2016-78, resolution authorizing negotiations, purchase, and the exercise of the city's powers of eminent domain to acquire certain real property interests necessary for the Second Creek Infrastructure Improvements Project. Resolution 2016-79, resolution authorizing negotiations, purchase, and the exercise of the city's powers of eminent domain to acquire certain real property interests necessary for the Highway 2 widening project.
Thank you. Now I'm open for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Bullock.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Mr. McElDowney.
Second.
Have a motion of second to approve the consent agenda, and I'll ask for a roll call All right, for the record, the consent agenda is passed unanimously by the City Council this evening. Next, we move into public hearings. We have the 2016 JAG Formula Grant Public Hearing. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing and invite the interim chief of police Lowell Richardson forward to speak about the grant application.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Tonight, what we have is a JAG grant that has been awarded...
Tonight, what we have is a JAG grant that has been awarded to the city for $18,766. Part of the requirement of the grant before the funds can be released is that we hold a public hearing and open it for public comment. And so, that's why I'm here tonight to speak to that and answer any questions you might have about the grant and what we're going to do with it.
Does any of the council members have any questions about the grant? Is anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and address council regarding this grant application? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. I ask for a motion and a second to proceed and submit the grant application. Mr. McAdonnie.
Thank you. I would move to approve the resolution 16, or, 16-375.
Okay.
Or, I'm sorry, approve the grant.
Grant, okay. Mr. Amador.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Would the city attorney please read the title?
There's no title on this.
Okay, would the city attorney not read the title? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, Chief, you got your grant.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Next on the agenda are resolutions. The next three resolutions are interrelated and will be presented together. However, the council will need to vote on each one separately. I invite Community Development Director Chris Kramer forward to begin the discussion.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Protem and members of council. I was originally going to be presenting to you our consultant for water issues, Paul Zylas. Nope, still not here. So in lieu of that, Jenny Oxmacher, planner, will do her best Paul Zylas impersonation. There'll be one presentation for all three of your next items. Will also serve as a presentation that will function and hopefully provide you the requisite information for the GID meetings that will occur after the conclusion of the council, regular council meeting. So, Jenny, take it away.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of council. So I am not Paul Zylas. I will do my best. So please pardon my lack of preparation today. So we're going to go over several different items that have to do with water that pertain to three resolutions we'll be considering tonight. So the first one is going to be a resolution for the GID, IGAs. The second is a water resource agreement for our parks. The third is authorizing a purchase from South Adams County Water Sanitation District for some Phase 4 water, and then the last is an update on our ongoing water policy. So the first item, and my apologies for this not displaying properly. The city has three general improvement districts. The Northern Infrastructure Improvement District, the E470 Commercial Area Improvement District, and the E470 Residential Area Improvement District. So these districts were established to construct infrastructure for quality development within the community. So annexation of the land served by these facilities is highly desirable to the city to help meet the goals of our comprehensive plan as well as our economic strategic plan. And currently, the agreements in place with these three GIDs do not explicitly require properties to annex into the city. So what staff's recommending is that the city sign an IGA with each of these GIDs and with South Adams County Water Sanitation District to require annexation if a property will use any of the GID facilities. So this IGA would be effective only for new connections to GID infrastructure and only for new development. So later this evening during the GID board meetings, each GID is going to consider a resolution that requires annexation if a property is to use the GID facilities, and also approval of a resolution signing the IGA with the city, South Adams, and the other GIDs.
Bless you.
So the next resolution is approval of a water resource agreement. So the city has purchased some Burlington Wellington irrigation shares. And as part of this purchase process, the city has to come to an agreement with South Adams County Water Sanitation on a water resource agreement for the use of these shares. So the water resource agreement determines the number of credits the city will receive for these irrigation shares, and that turns out to be 14.9 acre feet, which equivalent, is the equivalent of 33.1 ERUs. And these irrigation shares can be only used for irrigation purposes. And so the plan is to use this water on 2K projects such as the Turnberry Park and the villages of Buffalo Run East Park. So this agreement with the water district establishes the terms of use for the water resources and the applicable fees for the water. And this agreement pertains only to this specific water purchase. It does not apply to any other purchases. So changes from prior agreements, we've done water resource agreements with South Adams for other purchases before. Starting in 2016, the water district has enacted a water storage fee. So this fee is in the new agreement. We're going to be required to pay it as all other future water resource agreements, and district customers will be required to pay it. This fee doesn't have an expiration or a termination date for the storage fee, so we'll continue to pay this on any future purchases. But what the storage fee does is allows South Adams to build additional water storage in the form of reservoirs, and it will help provide storage for Phase 4A ERUs for the district. So with this water resource agreement, we're going to end up paying a total storage fee of a little over $50,000, and staff recommends approval of this agreement. So the last resolution this evening is authorizing the purchase of Phase 4A ERUs from South Adams County Water Sanitation District. These ERUs are a new source of water from the water district, and they're a result of them drilling new horizontal alluvial wells from their existing wells along the Platte River. So the resolution is approving the purchase of 265 ERUs of this Phase 4 water from the water district, and it will use up approximately 85% of the current balance of the water acquisition fee fund. So the price of the ERUs is $10,250 per ERU. It includes the storage fee of a little over $700 per ERU, and so the total purchase price is $2.7 million. Now, the water acquisition fee the city collects and is using to purchase these ERUs is designated to acquire water rights for the city for the purpose of watering city parks, recreational facilities, and other city-owned facilities. So these ERUs that we purchase will go towards that use. South Adams is requesting that purchase applications be submitted to the district by July 1st, so that's why we're requesting approval this evening. So the last item is not connected directly to a resolution, but staff wanted to make you aware that we're working on updating our water policy. So the policy creation and update is recommended due to the availability of Phase 4 water from the water district. Previously, customers haven't been able to go to the water district directly to purchase ERUs, so that has changed how we look at allocating city ERUs in the future. So the goal of this policy is to carefully allocate the water resources that are controlled by the city and within the city's portfolio. So we currently have water policies, but they only apply to GSA allocations under the 2004 IGA with the city. What staff's recommending is that we come up with an administrative policy for other ERUs which the city owns. So the city owns PV or Prospect Valley ERUs, Freiko ERUs, or Farmers Reservoir Irrigation Canal. And then we're about to purchase these 4A ERUs from the South Adams County Water Sanitation District. So based on the economic strategic plan and the comprehensive plan, we're going to put together a list of criteria for when these city-owned ERUs can be allocated or purchased. So we want to encourage non-residential development. We're trying to create jobs and stimulate economic growth by allocating these ERUs. And so, these will establish guidelines for staff to react to requests for water. So I'd be happy to attempt to answer any questions.
Okay, does anyone from council have any questions? Okay, looks like you lucked out there. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Okay. I would like to ask if anyone in the audience would like to come forward and address council regarding these resolutions. Okay, okay, I'm going to ask for a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2016-68. Mr. McAdonnie.
Thank you. I'd move to approve Resolution 2016-68.
All right, Mr. Douglas.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve Resolution 2016-68. Let me see here. I need to ask for a voice vote.
No, city attorney.
City attorney, read the title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 2016-68, resolution approving intergovernmental agreement for the purpose of serving properties with water and wastewater facilities.
All right. Now I'll ask for a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Then we need a motion to approve Resolution 2016-75.
69.
69, I'm sorry, 69. All right, Mr. McAdonnie.
Move to approve Resolution 2016-69.
Thank you. Mr. Bullock.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Would the city attorney please read the title?
Resolution 2016-69, resolution approving water resources agreement with SACSWD.
Thank you. I have a motion and second. The title's been read. I'll ask for a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just a point of correction, that should be SACWST.
Okay. Correction is noted. Now we'll go to Resolution 2016-75. I need to ask the interim city attorney, please read the title.
Resolution 2016-75, resolution authorizing purchase of ERUs from South Adams County Water and Sanitation District.
Thank you. Mr. Bullock.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2016-75.
Mr. Teeter.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve Resolution 2016-75. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Next item on the agenda, our ordinance is on first reading. We'll start with ordinance 2103. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on this ordinance? Seeing no one, I'm open for a motion. Mr. Bullock.
Move to approve ordinance 2103 on first reading. Council is seated.
Thank you. Mr. Teeter.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Would the city attorney please read the title?
Ordinance 2103, an ordinance amending the 2016 budget of the city of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Adams County Open Space Grant Funds in the amount of $90,000 for the acquisition of a residential lot located at 6023 Forest Drive and the authorization of the expenditure thereof.
Thank you. I have a motion and second. Title's been read. I'm going to ask for a roll call vote. For the record, ordinance 2103 is introduced unanimously by the council. Next item on the agenda is administrative business. Is there any administrative business this evening by the council? Mr. Teeter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did have a resident call me between Chambers and Highway 2, and he would like to know if we're going to do anything with the dirt road. At parent time, we have a blocked barricade sign up there. He's wanting to know if we're just going to leave it set like it is or we're going to do something with the road before, for long.
You're talking about 112th, correct?
Yes, 112th.
Who's handling that one? Maria. Come on up.
Yes, Councilmember Teeter. That road was closed in the spring for, because of the wet weather, and we continue to have issues out there. We'll check that again. We have been checking it weekly. As soon as it dries out, though, we'll get in the grader in there and grate it out and open it back up. But the intent is not to have it closed permanently.
Yeah, I did check it today. It's still too wet to come through there.
Yep. So we are monitoring that. We'll continue to do so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Maria. Any other administrative council business? Seeing none, we'll move on. We have reports. We'll start with Troy. I think you're the acting city manager? Roger?
Michelle.
One of the two of you. It's your turn.
Actually, I'm sitting in at this meeting for Brian, so I'll handle this, even though Troy is the acting city manager this week.
All right, we'll go get after...
We're swapping roles, tag team.
All right.
Just called your attention to the report that was sent out earlier this afternoon. The results from the third town hall meeting are contained in that report. And I think you'd be pleased with number of people who participated and also the length of time that they stayed on. Far exceeded what other cities have seen for their participation in town hall meetings. Also, there was an inquiry as to why the South Adams County Water and Sanitation District's table was located away from other tables at Neighborhood Outreach, and it was done because of the display that they had. It was difficult to move evidently, so that's the reason. They were not exiled for any other reason. It was merely a logistics issue. Also, there's a summary attached for the capital program update. Refer your attention to that for updating on the activity that has happened with capital projects. And then also, there's correspondence from the North Metro Railline News that's attached for your reference, and then also the council work schedule. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, city attorney.
Just a minor update. I understand in my absence last week there was a request for a letter to Forest City from the city council. I hadn't communicated effectively that I had previously, the week before, contacted the attorney for Forest City that I've dealt with on the past, and he agreed to pass on a request from me to them to consider including disclosure about Dick's Sporting Goods Park in their closing documents. So I hope to hear back from them this week, but that letter is under review by my office. So I wanted to give you an update on that.
All right, great. And that request was from Andrew Amador. The reason being, he sits on the cab, and he wanted to be able to give a report.
Okay.
All right. All right, I'll go ahead with my report. Starts off with Adams County Mayor's Lunch. You know, we've been meeting about every other month, and it's all of the mayors in Adams County. And it's interesting, and it's good, because I get to talk to the other mayors about their projects. And one of those projects is a Thornton project, and they have an interest in working with us on expanding a roadway. And I think it'll be beneficial to Commerce City, and I'm looking forward to Thornton coming in, sitting down and going over their project with us. So it gives us a good heads up. Sashco Celebration. Congratulations to Sashco, 80 years in service. Small business, family-owned. Never do you hear that. 80 years is a long time for a small family-owned business to make it. They're in Commerce City, and I'm proud that they're in Commerce City. But they're doing a good job, and they're in double-digit numbers this year for profits. So they're doing well. And Mayor Protem Bullock was also there with me, and former representative, US...
US Representative.
Representative.
For District 7.
For District 7, Bob O'Prey. So it was a good event. Then Rotary. And then I did attend the Noble Energy Reception at the Governor's Mansion. I'm glad I did. There were several people there. Some of the commissioners, other mayors. So it was a good event to be at. I also had a meeting with Betsy Markey, small business, US Small Business Director. And we met over at Asahi Foods in Commerce City and got to learn a little bit about their business, understand some of their hardships. They do have fresh, high-end fish. They cut up and produce a lot of the meat that goes to the sushi restaurants here in the metro area. And one of their concerns was XL Energy. And with this last spring snowstorm that we had, knocked out power for quite some time. And their freezers can only go so long without power before they end up with a big loss. So we're asking about how we can work with XL, look for better redundancy and backup. But it was really a neat thing to do, because you get to learn a little bit about the business here in Commerce City. And they brought in a professional meat cutter that cuts all of their fish. And they cut about 150-pound Big Eye tuna for us to be able to see how they cut these fish and stuff. I wish that all the council... I wish that all the council could see that. It was, it was pretty remarkable how, how these people work and, and the fish that they're dealing with, and, and what the price per pound is, is, is pretty phenomenal. So congratulations to Asahi Foods. And then we have the Neighborhood Outreach. I wanna make sure I think all of the staff, it takes a lot of effort to put those outreaches together for the setup. The park was in, was in wonderful condition, so I know the maintenance was out there and make sure that that thing was looking pristine. Great band, hopefully all of our residents enjoyed not only the, the event and the food and the entertainment, but also their, their ability to access all of our services within the community. We had the QCF Golf Tournament. I golfed with Steve Douglas and Rick Teeter and the current DA, Dave Young. And had a great time, and congratulations, QCF, on raising some money for scholarships. And then we had the South Adams County Fire Department Groundbreaking here at the, on this property, just, just to the west of City Hall. It was, it was great, I'm glad that they're building their building here, and I look forward to seeing the construction happen. We'll get some more density in here, that daytime density, maybe we can start seeing some restaurants on this property as well. And we have the South Adams County Fire Department Grand Opening, Station Four, and, you know, I've been in a lot of firehouses, but now the way they're building firehouses and the workout equipment and, and stuff like that, and they talked about the workout equipment. It's top-notch, top-of-the-line, but one of the number-one, the number-one killer of firefighters is heart disease. And so they need to have that kind of equipment in there to make sure that they stay physically fit and active. And I know tonight we have Mr. Woog from the Fire Department here, so please take back the congratulations to South Adams Fire. We had the Eleventh Annual Trap Shoot Rotary Club of Commerce City puts on. Roger Tinkenberg actually got to come and participate. Thanks, Roger. It was on your birthday, so happy birthday, couldn't pass that up. But thank you to Rotary, another good event that ends up in scholarships for the kids here in Commerce City. And I went down to, I do this every year, and I don't know that the council realizes it, but every year I gotta get dressed up and go over to Dick's Sporting Goods Park and do a message for the Fourth of July event. And they put that on the big screen during the game and at the beginning, and let everybody know, welcome to Commerce City. And it's, it's been a privilege to do that, and, and I look forward to that every year. So be watching for that on, on the Fourth of July, and you'll get to see my corny remarks on the, the big screen. Then we had, there was Rotary again, and of course, the Telephone Town Hall. And I wanna thank the council members for being there and fielding all the questions. This was the first one that I've missed. I just had some things that I couldn't get away from, some family issues that I had to take care of, so thank you for covering in my absence. And then Public Works Open House, the Touch a Truck Event. Went over there with my wife and my grandson, and he got to touch all the trucks, and, and I will tell you, they did a top-notch job. And they had all their equipment was sparkling clean, everybody was very pleasant. And they were doing their best to make sure that, that the residents were understanding of what that department does, which is important. That's the department I spent ten years in. And I think it's the one that's out of sight, out of mind. But, but they're the ones that take care of the road problems, the, you know, street sweeping, drainage. But the stuff that they do, all of the signs and everything else, congratulations to them, because that's great that we're making it open and available for our residents to come see at least once a year. And, and giving them a little bit of an idea of who the people are and what the equipment we have for weed mowing and, and snow plowing and everything else that goes along with it. So thanks, Maria, for, to you and your, your group over at Public Works. And last but not least, thank you to Michelle. She went with me on this Federal Railroad Administration meeting up in Loveland. And I was honored that I was the only mayor from the metro area to be there to speak about train noise. And I know I, I still receive complaints, I received one last week and forwarded on to Michelle to give the person access to BNSF's phone number to file a complaint. Even though we were the first city to have quiet crossings in the state, and the first city to have wayside horn crossing in the state, we still end up, on occasion, having conductors sound the whistles or horns on the, on the trains, disrupting people's sleep. And you know, if you, if you live by a train for a lot of years, you get used to that sound, but on the other hand, when it goes away and it comes back once in a while, it's much more irritating. And so I've had people that are literally two miles away from the tracks that are saying, hey, this guy blowing the train horn, it's gotta stop. Well, Windsor, several of the small communities up there in Loveland, Fort Collins, they were all at the table with the Federal Railroad Administrator. Both of the senators were there, Jared Polis was there, so we had a lot of high-end dignitaries in the room. And I did get the chance to speak on our quiet crossings and the impact that it's had on our community and how beneficial they are. But I also talked about blocked crossings, the fact that trains are getting longer and sightings are getting shorter. Train horn noise with operators or conductors that decide they need to wake up a friend or an ex-girlfriend or whatever when they drive through our town. And the, I think the biggest thing that I talked about is the fact that the conductors still have discretion to blow their horn whenever they want. And of course, the railroad administration takes that very seriously if they see someone walking down the siding or something like that, and how they feel it necessary to blow their horn. The downside is, is when they have too much control over when they can blow their horn, that they blow it whenever they want. So there's gotta be a balance, and, and so I talked about that balance. I know there was a write-up, I believe at the Denver Post on it, so you can research that and see. I know they, they did put some of my comments in there. And then I also forwarded on to all the council members the results of that FRA meeting. So if you want any more information, send that to, you can, you can contact me and I'll, I'll give you the information that you want. But it was great to represent the entire metro area from the perspective of the issues that we're having with train noise and blocked crossings. All right, now I have an item that I need to take care of. I am going to be out of town and, and thankful to the residents for allowing me the opportunity, as is many of our council, for the CML event that's taking place Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. I will only be out of town Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, and I need to appoint someone to be the mayor while I'm out of town in case there's train horn noise complaints that come in. And this time while I'm out of town for, for Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, I'm gonna have Councilwoman Carson be the acting mayor. So all of you at home, if you have problems, please call Councilwoman Carson. All right? And that will conclude my report. Does anybody have anything they'd like to add?
I just wanna say one thing about Sashco. There was a great article written up yesterday's Denver Post about Sashco in the business section, front page. So if anyone has a business section of the Denver Post, they wrote up a great article about Sashco and their time being in, their eighty years being in business.
All right, Mr. Douglas.
Yes, a couple things to report. I'm on a northeast transportation connection, and we didn't have a meeting April, April twentieth because of the A-line opening. And so we did a coordinated effort with Commerce City to have a tent over there off of Central Park Boulevard at one of the stations, and it was successful, successful, let me figure, attendance for that A-line opening. On the twenty-second of this month is Bike to Work Day, and you can go to mywayto-go.org to find the map for your area as far as biking to work. And we're gonna have a, a station on the Sand Creek Trail, Trailhead in Commerce City. Last Monday, I attended the fiduciary essential conference downtown for the police pension board. And we talked about defined contributions, defined benefits, auto enrollments, anything that deals with trying to achieve the best possible investment way that a police department can, can opt into on the four oh one plans. And also trying to put together for July third, a pump track coming to Commerce City. If that comes to be, I will be putting that on social media as far as where the event's gonna be held, so, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Douglas. Any other reports? Seeing none. We are going to adjourn this meeting of the city council of Commerce City, and we are going to stay here and take care of the NIGID meeting, which I'm calling to order now. And I'd ask the clerk to please call the meeting, to, to please call the roll.
Thank you, sir. I had to switch the audio over, so we have a separate audio. So for the record, I'd just like to note that Chairman Ford called the meeting of the NIGID to order approximately six fifty-six.
Thank you.
Mayor Ford?
Here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Chairman Ford?
Here.
Vice Chairman Bullock?
Here.
Board Member Amador?
President.
Board Member Teeter?
Here.